Call to order to regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Monday, April 26, 2021 at 2 o'clock. As always, we'll start off with invocation. I'll ask Commissioner Barney Castle if he'd like us, please.
Good day, Lord. Thank you for another day of life. Thank you for another beautiful day. Lord, please go with us as we conduct business here in our county that we've made, make decisions, pleasing to you and to our sinners. Appreciate everyone that's here today, Lord. Go with us in God's protection in his name. Amen.
Please continue standing for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For off the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Would they ever say aye?
Aye.
And I'll move on to our comments for our manager and commissioners, starting with Commissioner Morris.
Mr. Chairman, just like to welcome everybody. We've got a good crowd here this afternoon and hopefully a good crowd on the internet as well. So, thanks for coming and thanks for your interest in what we're doing here. All have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barney Castle.
Got to iterate what Commissioner Morris said. Take care of the world from being here. Great to see if it turned out. Let's see people interested in the county.
Commissioner Menhoe.
Thank you. And I also want to re-echo, thank you to everybody that's here today. Everybody that's watching this live stream, I want to say hello and welcome you to our meeting. And God has delivered us a beautiful day today. This weather, you can't beat it. I love it. And just thank the good Lord for this type of weather. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Collins?
Yes, thanks everyone for being here. We appreciate the attendance. We appreciate your interest in the Stokes County and what we're doing here. And we hope to get some things taken care of today. So, we appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, as well as they said, it's good to see everybody here. And with that, I'll just go ahead and pass it on to our county manager, Ms. Oakley.
I'd like to welcome everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready to move on.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll now move on to our public comments. As always, if you would want to call your name, just come up here and state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to talk. Shannon will have the timer here. When that timer goes off, please try to wrap it up quickly. We'll start with Mr. Philip Gordon. Yeah, you can take it off when I tell you.
First of all, thank you, Ms. Oakley and Commissioners. My name is Philip Gordon. A lifetime resident of Pinnacle. Went off to college, I came back and retired from Pinnacle School in 2002 with 32 years of teaching experience in North Carolina. I've come today to express concerns, not only for our community, but for my church. I'm a member of Pinnacle United Methodist Church and a longtime member of the Lions Club in Pinnacle. Today I come asking for your consideration, for concerns that we have that deal with the proposal to move the dumpster site from 52 South to Pinnacle, up behind our church and fire department in downtown Pinnacle. First of all, I have two concerns. First is the trash problem. I live in Pinnacle and I do use the dumpsters down on 52. Just came by a few minutes ago and I noticed there's still a lot of litter in the ditches and in the bushes to and from the dumpster, both north and south, particularly south. Whether or not the population density in Pinnacle is not quite comparable to that in King, which I would say probably 75% of the trash comes from that area. So, we think that's going to be a problem if they move it to our Pinnacle area. It'd be further to come and probably trash in our community. Our church is probably 125 yards from the proposed dump site. We have some real concerns there. The postal service, and I have a letter, Mr. Nixon, I'd like to give to you before I leave, from the postmaster expressing her concern. Trash is just one of the problems, but the main issue is safety. We don't want to inherit the trash problem, but we're thinking we're going to have more problems with the safety issue. My church is right on the corner of High Bridge Road, right across from the post office. The school entrance is Surry Line Road, which is right across from our church. We have buses coming in and out twice in the morning, twice in the afternoon, bringing elementary kids and then taking Justin Grove Middle School kids. So, that's a concern. First of all, our church is pretty busy too. We have a garden club that meets there regularly. The Ruining Club at Pinnacle meets there. We have a Boy Scout troop and a Cub Scout pack that meets there weekly. So, we're concerned. Our entrance is off of High Bridge Road, although our church faces Old 52, you turn on the High Bridge. So, we're concerned. The Millennium School in Mount Erie drops off and picks up students in our parking lot. We have an agreement with them that they come by and they come, all through Stokes County, King included. So, we're really concerned with the traffic problem that we'll impose upon our district. We're not a heavily populated area, but we have quite a bit of traffic and that's probably the most congested place in town, particularly when parents are dropping kids off in the morning, picking them up in the afternoon. And, you know, people come to the post office. We have postal trucks, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks coming in and out all the time. So, it is a concern for us and in our community. The main problem, and I'll close with this, a right turn off of 52 on the High Bridge Road is hard enough in a regular vehicle, but you take these big trash trucks coming, there's no way they can make that turn without swerving out left on 52 or turning right on High Bridge Road and swerving across the yellow line for incoming traffic. There's a telephone pole right there. The main thing, again, is the road itself. 150 yards after the turn right on High Bridge, there's a blind spot on either side of a hill. I'm not sure what the interest for your proposal might be, but it's going to be a bad situation, either or, where people are coming or going, making a left turn into the dump site. So, that's a real concern for us. It's a concern for our community. And another thing, if traffic backs up, what's going to happen? If our firemen have a fire call or rescue squad call, you know that seconds and minutes are valuable in a life-saving situation. So, I ask that you think about this proposal, that you visit the site and you take into consideration perhaps finding somewhere else. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, up next we have Brad Chandler.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brad Chandler. I reside at 1457 Forest Road, Westfield, North Carolina. In 2006, as I was anticipating retiring, we spent time, my wife and I spent time looking around for a place to build our dream house on our property. We had a very strong desire to love animals. So, in 2015, I retired as a law enforcement officer and I made our home here in 2015. Not born here, not raised here. We chose Stokes County as a place to live and as a place to be involved in the community. In the past year, especially the past year, with the events that continue to go around in the country, you know, I'm very angry. I retired and I come to a place that I want to be. And as the country is being torn apart from within, you've got big cities everywhere where police departments stand down and there's looting, burning going on. And it's getting, every day it's more and more normal. You know, and we heard during the Obama administration, besides the hope and change, we heard that, well, you know what? There's going to be a new normal, new normal. I can't tell you how many times I heard that. So, then, as maybe, probably a few months ago, I started seeing and hearing things that it just wasn't coming from the, from another state or some faraway place. It seems like it's starting to come here to Stokes County. To me, one of the primary main liberties that we have as American citizens is the right of free speech. And trust me, I understand what y'all go through as commissioners. I mean, I'm more familiar with the city council manager, former government. But I know that the challenges, I know the time that you put into it. And for the most part, I think everybody that serves office, I think that they want to do it for the community. I don't think they're trying to do what's best for them or their family. I think they're actually trying to do what's good for the community. So, it gets kind of alarming when I start hearing that we want to limit free speech. And don't get me wrong, I don't condone violence. I don't, I don't condone any kind of vulgarity or shaming or anything. I mean, there's, I understand protocol, but for goodness sakes, I cannot believe that we're talking about, and we're, I mean, everybody ran as a Republican. I thought that was one of our basic tenements of what we were about. The other thing that's under attack is freedom of religion. So, I mean, so after, if you all pass this, is that next? Third thing that's under attack is the right to possess and bear arms. Is that next? Are we going to compromise on that too? We're a republic. Government, government is not easy. I'll tell you what's easy is when you have a communist regime or socialist regime where you have somebody that just says, this is what's going to happen and we got to do it. And I've sat in those chairs as employees at my previous, before I retired, and yeah, it does. When people get up and talk, sometimes it doesn't even seem to be relevant to y'all. In other words, the level of government you're in. But it's, people need to feel like someone is listening to them. When I was with the police department, the people that, the people, the most people came to us, they didn't even have a law enforcement problem. They had, they had a problem where it'd be, they were seeing things, hearing things, bats in the house, snakes in the house, and we're a busy place. But you know what? We listened to them. We listened to them. And nine times out of 10, we could help them. And they, and they would, and they would go on with their life. But for, to just summarily just say, hey, look, and it's going to be subjective. You're going to decide, someone's got to decide on what, what is proper and what's not when it comes to the topic of discussion. And it's just like when you talk about defunding the police. And I'm not saying you all are into that or support that.
Mr. Shannon, I want you to get about four and a half if you can.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Robin Johnson.
Good afternoon. I'm Robin Johnson. I'm the pastor of Pinnacle United Methodist Church. I live at 1024 Roy Tuttle Road in Pinnacle, North Carolina. And I'm here to speak against the proposed recycling center to be located in Pinnacle, North Carolina. I would like to thank Sonya Cox and Jake Oakley for inviting me to the meeting today and helping me understand the process of this recycling center to be located in Pinnacle. The major, one of the major reasons is to move it off of Old 52 is for safety reasons. And I support everything that Philip Gordon, one of my parishioners, has spoken to today. And it just didn't make sense to me to move it from one unsafe location to another unsafe location. So, I just wanted to speak out about that. There is a hill there if you're traveling toward 52 on High Bridge Road and you can't see beyond that. And if those big trucks were moving around in that general area, it could be dangerous. Also, my board of trustees, chairperson last night, shared with me that we have bike clubs that park in our parking lot and utilize High Bridge Road. And I think, I don't know for sure, but Saturday is a good day for biking when people are away. I believe that might be one of the busiest days at the recycling center that morning of the, of the trash recycling center, because people like to do that when they have that time available. And the last item, I just, I feel like there's a lack of sharing with the community before the land was purchased and in this process. So, I just wanted to come and voice the opinion of many of my members. I think unanimous opinion of my members that this is not the best location for the new recycling center. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Andy Stevens.
I have my typical single sheet slightly longer than three minutes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Andy Stevens and I reside at 157 Old Garner Drive in Stokes County outside King. I speak here this afternoon to advise you not to go down this path of the oppressive, intolerant radical left. Your ongoing discussions of plans to curtail public and political speech is not only just plain wrong, but anti-American as well. Today we may find out if there are three votes among you to take us back to the time of the feudal lords and the lowly subjugated serfs or not. I certainly hope the voters in the last two elections were not sold a socialist dictatorship, believing phony words of conservatism you knew you did not hold. Sitting on this commission are members who in the not-so-recent past attempted to impose a censure muzzle on fellow commissioners. That was swiftly tabled after the public outcry then. What you plan today is far more insidious and far more dangerous as you intend, if you have the votes to pass it, censure of the public at large. A public, by the way, you serve as an elected official and not a public serving you. It is without question there are those among us who believe the Constitution and Bill of Rights are mere words on paper with no absolute guarantees and worse, a living document meant to change to reflect the times we live in. I and many like me in Stokes County beg to differ. We will soon see where you stand. Our North Carolina forefathers, when they resolved to adopt and ratify our Constitution on November 21, 1789, demanded as a condition, among many others, in Article 15, which states that the people have a right peaceably to assemble together to consult for the common good or to instruct their representatives, and that every freeman has a right to petition or apply to their legislatures, their government, for redress of grievances. Note the condition to instruct their government and note the absence of the caveat, but only if the chairman allows. Are there three votes here today to rewrite this sacred and honored ratification of 232 years ago? Our public county commission meetings are streamed and recorded so as to reach every citizen in Stokes County. It is a public broadcasting system owned and paid for by the taxpayers of Stokes County. It is not the chairman's Facebook product and our chairman is no Mark Zuckerberg. Political speech, including campaign speeches, free speech in its purest form and is not subject to commendation or censure by thin-skinned officials. After all, you as elected officials benefit from the exposure to the public, meeting after meeting yourself. As a medium reaching the entire electorate of the county, any politician running for office would be a fool not to take advantage of the opportunity afforded by three or four minutes to make their case. So, the question remains, are there three votes on this commission willing to turn this broadcast into Facebook and censor or even ban the public from participating? Better pony up the cash to buy the system outright first. Keep in mind, we already suffer a governor who would be king. We do not need Norwana County Commissioner following in his footsteps here in Stokes County. Finally, have you seriously considered the repercussions of your contemplated assault on our right to assemble and speak feeling? I dare say you have not. Should you persist in your effort to put your subjective views of what the public must adhere to when speaking from the floor, labeling it as inflammatory, obscene, or not germane to the actions of this body, please keep in mind your own rule, your own words and rules will soon be used against you. Bear in mind, there are those in this community who believe the word of God is inflammatory, offensive, obscene, and has no business in the conduct of a county commission meeting. They object even to a moment of silence and make a convoluted case that there is a constitutional separation of church and state. There is not. Should you persist in this reckless and ill-conceived course of action to subjectively censure public speech, your own rules and words will be used through the activist courts to demand that invocations and blessings be stricken from the conduct of these proceedings. You will be opening the floodgates and creating a sea of secular water that even mighty Moses with his staff will be unable to part and return us to our safe haven where we are today. No, Commissioners, censoring the speech of the public is not good policy. Table this motion and let the public have its say, three or four minutes at a time. You don't even have to pay attention. After all, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. Thank you.
Amos Elvis.
My name's Amos Elvis. I'm on Carson Watts Road, King, North Carolina, USA. And I just wanted to say, I believe in this constitution that we have for the United States. And I think that any treading upon my First and Second Amendment or any of my rights is wrong. And I know y'all don't like to hear a lot of people talk, so I'm just going to say this. And I want everybody to see it, if you don't let people talk.
My comrades died on the battlefield protecting this. Thank you.
Stephen James.
Stephen James, 102 Kelly Stone Drive, King, North Carolina. I'm against changing the way that this public comment is done. I think everybody is aware of that. I will agree to give you this. No foul or vulgar language, no personal physical threats. I think there should be no 30-minute time limit on public comment. I know this board has not had to deal with an issue like the King Christian flag issue, but we had speakers, sometimes between 70 and 100 people in public comment. And you're going to have to sit there and listen to it if you have some big issue that comes up here. There's nothing that says that someone can't come in here and praise you if you do something well, but if you do something wrong, you got to hear that too. I think that Commissioner Morris's proposal is pretty close, but not exactly what we need. Do the right thing.
All right, we'll start off the motion for the consent agenda. Have a motion on this.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Would they ever say aye?
Aye.
We'll move on to our information agenda, the 2020 Olic presentation. Ms. Kelly Gutterham? All right.
Um, I believe you guys have hard copies of the PowerPoint, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll just get started. We have prepared the following PowerPoint to present what we feel to be some of the more pertinent topics of the county's fiscal year 20 audit. Your report has been submitted and approved by the LGC with a clean, unmodified opinion, which means we found nothing that led us to believe the financials would be misleading to the reader. So, this third slide shows the fund balance classifications within the general fund. First, we start with your non-spendable, which is your inventory of 61,000. Then we have your restricted fund balance, which includes your stabilization by state statute of 3.2 million. The all others restricted fund balance consists of mental health, MOE, of around 30,000, health department of 303,000, school current expense of 458,000, and debt service of 3.3 million. Then you have your unassigned, or sorry, your assigned, 4.2 million. And then your unassigned of 7 million to arrive at a total general fund fund balance of 18.7 million. Now, we'll go over your available fund balance, which is a calculation the LGC utilizes to compare units across the state. First, we start with your total fund balance of 18.7 million, less your non-spendable of 61,000, less your stabilization by state statute of 3.2 million, to arrive at your available fund balance of 15.4 million, which is an overall decrease of 4.2 million over the prior year, mainly due to an increase in your stabilization by state statute and an overall decrease in your fund balance. Next, using the calculation from the previous slide, here's your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out within the general fund. This is another calculation that the LGC utilizes to compare units across the state. So, as you can see, the available fund balance percentage decreased roughly 10%, which was mainly due to the reasons discussed on the previous slide. The next slide is another comparison showing Stokes as compared to others within the same population group and across the state. So, you'll notice the county is above the overall population group. However, this information is based on 2019 numbers because 2020 is not available yet. Next, we'll go into some specifics of the activity within the general fund as compared to the prior year. Overall revenues increased around 1 million or 3%, which was mainly due to sales and services and intergovernmental revenues. Expenditures also increased around 9.8 million or 28%, which was mainly due to an increase in debt service for the repayment of interim financing due to the jail project. Additional information of the general fund, transfers in equated to 3.6 million, transfers out of 1.3 million, installment debt proceeds of 7.1 million, with an overall change in fund balance for the general fund of 2.3 million. So, now we'll go over some of the specifics, revenues and expenditures within the general fund as compared to prior year. First, we have your adverberum tax revenue, which decreased roughly 540,000 or 4%, which was due to a Then we have education, which increased only $38,000, or 15%, which, again, was due to an increase in salaries and related benefits. And then lastly, we have your general government, which increased around $1.8 million, or 32%, which was mainly due to an increase in insurance, medical costs, and increases in operating expenditures within the Finance Department, Elections, and Public Building Departments. Are there any questions?
Any questions, for? Mr. Morse?
Thanks, Ms. Chairman. Thanks for giving us a presentation today. Appreciate it. Good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you all.
Are there anything, I'm not asking anything specific about our presentation, but it's just a general comment, is are there any impacts we might expect from this pandemic that were either possibly in the documents that you just briefed or something we might expect a year from now?
That's a tough question, because...
I mean, I just thought you may have seen something somewhere else, or if there's anything we should be aware of.
Right. Everyone thought everything would decrease, but as you can see, everything increased, because, you know, you had an increase in your local option sales tax, that was statewide, increase in a lot of different areas, an increase in federal and state funding, you know, to compensate for the increase in expenditures. So at this point, I haven't heard anything specific. We just know that it's, there's just no, there's no real way to predict what each unit is going to experience, but I do know it's gonna be, it's gonna be drastic. Or not drastic, but significant. I mean, because we've got new federal money coming out. I'm not sure if you have received any of that yet, or will. So with things coming back to normal, I'm hoping that fiscal year '22 might level out a little bit, but I still think we're gonna, we're definitely gonna see some differences in fiscal year '21 that we say probably wouldn't have seen in '19. That's my personal opinion.
That's part of my question, is I think every county in the United States is gonna receive a big chunk of federal money from these handouts they're doing up there, whatever you call them. But I just wondered if there's anything like we should be watching for, that you guys will be looking at when you come back, related to those kind of unusual events?
Um, nothing more than what we would have already done for any other federal or state money. You know, we'll look at expenditures, we'll make sure that you're in compliance with the, you know, the agency's stated compliance requirements. Aside from that, I'm not sure what other granting agencies are going to, going to do. So transparency is definitely always the best option, you know, and Julia's done a wonderful job with that, you know, setting up that grant fund that she already had on her GL and, you know, being able to show exactly what the county has spent, what they've received. So continuing to do that and leaving a good paper trail, that's, that's the best that I can suggest, for sure. Not just for our purposes, but for state and federal purposes as well.
Okay, great. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Any more questions, comments?
I have one. Yes, my question is to Julia. Julia, have we got the amount that we'll be receiving from the American Rescue Plan yet? It has not come through.
I haven't seen anything yet, and the association says they haven't gotten anything yet. Back in April, when we had our conference, they said they were still waiting for explanation on what you could spend it on, what you can't spend it on, and how much. They've not even, not even gotten anything yet. Hard stand.
Thank you.
To answer your question, yeah.
The ACC has put out estimates, and we're in the $8 million range. I sent you all some...
Almost nine.
And it looks like it's mostly gonna be infrastructure and economic development is what this round is, is gonna be able to fund. A little different than the last time that we did.
I've seen that for a similar county, yeah.
Any more questions, comments?
You did say there were no significant findings of any sort.
Um, I did not mention findings. There were a couple of findings this year. They're located in the very back of your audit report, in the compliance tab. I wouldn't say they were significant in the sense that, you know, you still received an unmodified opinion. So one of them was related to a prior period adjustment, so that led into, you know, a material audit adjustment. But as far as significant in our eyes, I mean, every finding is significant, but if you have a clean, unmodified opinion, you know, findings are just a way, in my personal opinion, to let you know what we could improve on.
Oh, thank you. I'll read over that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Now move on to our discussion agenda on item A, the Tax Office Monthly Report. Mr. Richard Brehman.
Good afternoon. As always, I'll start off with the Monthly Task Collection Status Report. Pleased to announce that we've collected over $22.5 million so far, with three more months left in the fiscal year. We're 101% of the budgeted amount collected so far, so that's wonderful. The next item, we'll move on to our Discovery and Garnish Report. Figures look good, they look stable. Back looking at prior years, we've discovered 307 accounts for $7.2 million, approximately $72,000 in tax levy due on that. We've garnished 461 accounts for a levy of $287,000, and we've collected about $38,571 of that amount. Next item is the EMS Billing and Collections Report for the fiscal year. Total, we've billed 3,018 transports. We've charged almost $1.9 million, and we've collected almost $1.1 million of that figure. The next item is our DataMax Collections Report. DataMax is a collections company that, for this first quarter of this year, has collected $52,472,000 in Lincoln accounts for us. Moving right along to our real and personal releases, less than $100, we have seven accounts, a total of $417.80. Then we have real and personal releases, more than 100, which is four accounts, total And then, next item is real and personal refunds, more than 100, that's seven accounts, a total of $1,237.57. And then the final item I have is a present use violate application, and that's all I have.
All right. Any questions or comments for Richard?
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Just wanted to concede for you.
Yeah, would like to move those three items to the consensus.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, item B, the Board of Elections Voting Machine Request. Mr. Jason Perry.
Need to push that up a little bit for me. Good afternoon. Thank you for your time today. So each voting site in Stokes County has two different types of voting equipment. And I should, Ms. Shaver also, I guess you have, I'm not used to giving these presentations. She gave you some information in your packet last week, so. Each voting site in Stokes County has two different types of voting machines. There's the optical scan tabulator, that's the one that every voter uses. You fill out your, it's classic, fill out your paper ballot, fill out the oval, and then run it through the voting machine. We purchased those, or the county purchased those, last year and used it for the first time in the March 2020 primary. I've gotten good feedback from workers and voters on those. Those are doing well, so we'll, of course, continue to use those machines for hopefully a long time to come. Each voting site also has an ADA compliant voting machine, so these are machines that, among other things, there are headphones that would allow a voter, again, any voter can use an ADA compliant machine, but they're specifically designed for a voter who may have a disability and may choose to use that machine. So it has headphone capability, it has touchscreen capability, and other options along those lines. My board and I decided, when we made the purchase of the optical scan tabulators, which are called the DS200s, we decided at that time to hold off on purchasing ADA compliant equipment. The ADA machine we currently have is called the AutoMark, and this was thought of to be a cost-saving measurement. There's now a grant that's been made available that could help in buying these ADA compliant machines. So the grant total value is $51,277. The total cost of the new voting machines and some additional expenses would be about $72,000, so you're looking at approximately a difference of $21,000. But there are some other factors to be weighed. There's preventive maintenance, which is required of voting machines once a year. The preventive maintenance on the AutoMark, our current ADA compliant machine, is $6,440 a year. The yearly cost for the express votes, which would be the machines that we would potentially purchase, the ADA machines, the yearly cost for those is $2,400. So you're looking at a yearly savings of a little over, looking at $4,040. In addition, the trade-in value of the AutoMarks is currently $9,200. The representative from the vendor indicated this would be a limited time. Typically, for us, it would be $4,600, which equates to $200 a machine, but they're offering $400 a machine of a trade-in allowance. And also, as these machines continue to age, the trade-in allowance, it was indicated, would continue to go down as time passed. The current machines that we have, again, called the AutoMarks, were purchased in 2006. They will continue to be supported and serviced by the vendor, but they are approaching the end of their lifespan. I spoke with the Elections Director in Forsyth County. They had previously used the AutoMarks, and now they've transitioned to the express votes as of last year. And he spoke highly of the new machines. They're just updated, they're lighter, they're more portable, so he and others have spoken highly of those machines. I did want to make you aware of a lawsuit that was filed last year by the state NACP. They sought to stop the use of the express vote. They did file that lawsuit against the State Board of Elections and the counties that, at that point, had purchased the machines. They were hoping to have the machines decertified and prevented from use in the elections last fall. So at the Superior Court level, and the State Supreme Court, and the North Carolina Court of Appeals, their preliminary injunction was denied at each stage. The Superior Court Judge in Wake County found that there were no recorded tabulation errors or incidents of hacks or data breaches of the express vote. She also found that the evidence did not show that voters were more likely to contract COVID-19 from the express vote than other voting methods. In that case, the state has moved for summary judgment. Again, this is from the Associate General Counsel of the State Board of Elections. Moving for summary judgment allows the State Board to rely on evidence available that there were no problems with the express vote over the course of many elections in many counties, such that there is no need to proceed to trial, and the claim should be denied. There were 28 counties that used the express vote in the election last fall, and also some that used it last March as well. So there have been multiple elections, there have been multiple recounts, and no issues were found with the express vote, the updated ADA machine during those recounts or during those elections. There are about 30 counties that are moving toward purchasing them this year, North Carolina counties. They're used in jurisdictions across the country. South Carolina, every county uses them. There are some counties that don't have the traditional paper ballot, they use the express vote as their main machine, I guess you could say. And they've not had issues with them either. Again, we're not looking to use it for that purpose. We're sticking with our paper ballot, which is my preference, and I think most of the voters in Stokes County prefer that. This, again, is for ADA compliance. So my board determined that when taking into account the available grant, the longer-term cost savings, and the usability, this was a good time to pursue this purchase, and we presented the preliminary recommendation to you. I could go into more details on the steps, if you'd like, as well.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got some.
Okay. Commissioner?
Thank you. So the name of the voting machines that we used here last year were optical scan?
Right, yeah, the optical scan tabulator, that's the DS200, that's the technical name for it.
Did we have any problems with those?
I think during early voting in King, we did have some instances where the machine would jam. So what you do in that instance is there's an emergency flap on that machine, you open the flap, and then you would place the voted ballot in the emergency bin for the time being, and then, once the issue was resolved, you can close that flap and run the ballots through. And it was simply a matter of, and it happened, I think, two or three times, early voting in King, was the only report that I received, the ballot, I think, was sort of jamming in the back of the machine, so you just sort of pull it forward and let it fall through. The machine, the new machines that we do have, has a tabulator, gives you a running count on the screen, and so it was pretty easy to deduce that, or, excuse me, let me take that back, that's the old machine. The new machine actually tells you whether the ballot made it through far enough to have been counted or not, so that's a safeguard in the system. So that was the new machines that we have. We got a couple of isolated reports.
So, Jason, let me make sure I understand what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
Not sure if it was this board or the board before, but we just bought y'all 20-some new machines, did we not?
Correct.
And how much did we pay for those?
I think that was about $125,000, $130,000.
$125,713, no cents is what we paid for those.
Right.
And we did that because you came to us and said that the other machines were back from 2006.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So we decided to go ahead and buy those. So how old are these machines that we paid $125,000? How old are they now?
Well, they're...
Are they one-year-old?
Correct, and we would still continue to use those machines. That's, these are different...
I know you were saying ADA compliant, which is American Disabilities Act.
Correct.
However, I want to make sure that we, you're telling me we had basically no issues with the voting machines? And my dad taught me a long time ago, you don't need to fix something if it's not broken. And I'm gonna tell you, I have a hard time, even though it's 20-some thousand dollars, with you coming back a year later, wanting to buy machines that evidently, you say ADA compliant, which is, as I said, the American Disabilities Act...
The new machine actually tells you whether the ballot made it through far enough to have been counted or not. So that's a safeguard in the system. So that was the new machines that we have. We got a couple of isolated reports.
So Jason, let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Not sure if it was this board or the board before, but we just bought y'all 20-some new machines, did we not?
Correct.
And how much did we pay for those?
I think that was about $125,000, $130,000?
$125,713, no sense, is what we paid for those.
Right.
And we did that because you came to us and said that the other machines were back from 2006.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So we decided to go ahead and buy those. So how old are these machines that we paid $125,000? How old are they now?
Well, they're-
Are they one-year-old?
Correct. And we would still continue to use those machines. That's, these are different-
I know you were saying ADA compliant, which is American Disabilities Act.
Correct.
However, I want to make sure that we, you're telling me we had basically no issues with the voting machines? And my dad taught me a long time ago, you don't need to fix something if it's not broken. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I have a hard time, even though it's 20-some thousand dollars, with you coming back a year later wanting to buy machines that evidently, you say ADA compliant, which is, as I said, the American Disabilities Act. I'm having trouble putting county money for purchasing additional machines at this time. We would not have any problems. Mr. Sherman, that's all I have.
Commissioner Cox?
Let me clarify something.
Okay.
So the machines that you're wanting to buy are not the optical scanners. We're talking about two completely different pieces of equipment.
Correct.
So what he's saying is this is replacing the 2006-year-old equipment?
Correct, yes.
And they'll still use what they just bought to tabulate and scan? So this is not, it's too, I think there is some confusion about that.
Yeah, so we have the optical scan tabulator, which is the DS200.
What counts the votes.
That's the one that every voter, yeah, fill in the ovals on the ballot, the bigger ballot, and you run it through the DS200. We also have at our voting sites what are called AutoMarks. The AutoMarks are, as you noted, from 2006.
And they're one per site, one?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And they-
For people who-
For people, it marks the ballot on your behalf. There's a touchscreen where you insert the ballot and you hit the buttons and tell it how to vote and it kicks out to you. And then you take that ballot and you run it through the DS200 optical scan tabulator. My proposal would be to replace those AutoMark ADA machines with the express vote while retaining certainly the optical scan tabulators that we purchased last year. Correct.
So how many people would you say probably use the ADA machines countywide last year? Probably just total, you know, how many people voted that way?
The reports I get, it's very limited. It's maybe one per precinct or something along those lines, but it's very limited in how much it gets used.
Any more questions, comments? Mr. Morrison?
Jason, just a few general comments and questions. The AutoMark machines, are they worn out, the old ones? Are they in need of replacing for that reason?
No, they've got some more life to them. I've been thinking about this. I, probably if you had asked me about this two and a half months ago, I would have said, maybe we can, say, get five more years out of them, just sort of ballparking it. The proposal here was based on this grant money that was made available and syncing up the DS200, the optical scan machine, with the new ADA compliant equipment. But no, there is some more, we could get a little bit more out of the AutoMark, the current machine, I would say.
Does the new machine that replaces the AutoMark work better with the optical scan than the AutoMark, or are they the same? Would you say, are there some benefits to getting the new one?
The difference would be that the, there's a different card that is produced. Essentially, you run the card, you take a stock card, it's not a regular ballot and it runs through the express vote, the potential new machine, and then spits out your, the names of who you've chosen to vote for, and then you do take that over to the DS200. Some nominal differences along those lines. It does produce, it's not the traditional size, regular ballot, it is a smaller card. Again, the portability, the usability of the new machines is one of the selling points.
If we don't do the grant, are we likely to not get an opportunity for grant money again in the near future? Is this like a one-time shot, probably?
Since I've been here, this is the grant money that stemmed last year first from the CARES Act and now this money, this is, there's been some here and there, I think, but this is the largest amount since I've been here. And this is actually based on, it's called HAVA, Help America Vote Act, which actually stemmed from the 2000 presidential election. So I'm surprised there's actually money from that fund that's still available. But yeah, I wouldn't envision grant money being available in this amount in the next few years.
If we don't take advantage of this, then we'll probably have to use the other ones, that additional five years, you think they may last, right? The possibility?
Right, yeah. So we use the ones that we currently have for, yeah. And I'll tell you, kind of, I'll just explain kind of what my thinking was on this. The optical scan, some years ago, I came to, it might have been Commissioner Morris or it may have predated him, his county manager, and we set up a separate fund to begin putting some money aside if, at the end of fiscal year, if we had some left in our budget and we were in a position to do so countywide, then that money was placed into that fund. And so I think we had of the $125,000, we had about half of that in the fund. And then $65,000 or so of other money, county money, was used to fund the machines that we currently have. So I had the thought of, you know, starting that discussion, you know, this is a little bit lower amount, but starting, setting money aside or kind of planning for a few years down the line. But then this money made available, that's why my board. And when you take into account the additional savings in different areas, I think the numbers would kind of even out over time. So that was kind of the thinking. So the trade-in of value with the-
Do this, it would keep us from having to set money aside again for a while?
Correct, right.
If we do this expenditure?
Right.
Okay, just a couple other general questions. Are there any, have there been any charges or investigations of any voter fraud associated with any of the machines we use? Like the Dominion discussion that happened in other places? Or ours?
Ours are ESNS, some other company, it's not Dominion. I can't personally, I know we haven't had that issue here. I don't recall that issue in the state of North Carolina, an issue specifically with the machine itself and any fraudulent activity associated with it. I can't say for certain, but I, you know.
You're not aware of anything?
No.
Do you download votes on a stick out of any of these machines and carry them around from one place to the other? On a computer stick?
Yeah, the computer stick is, if it's during early voting, there is a stick in the voting machine, a memory stick, and that machine is locked up in a closet in the early voting sites or in our office if it's up here. There's tamper evident tapes and things like that as well. And all that is brought back to my office at the end of early voting. If it's an election day site, similarly, tamper evident tape, things of that nature. The flash drive, the memory stick itself, when it's brought back to my office, I have a computer, two computers in my office. There's one that's not connected to the internet. So that stick is, the results are uploaded to that computer that's not connected to the network. David Jones or someone from IT is there with me and we work through that. And then it's transferred to another flash drive, which is then taken to my computer, which of course is hooked up to the internet and the results on election night are uploaded.
Yeah, that's my other question I was going to ask, if you got any of these connected to the internet, but you've got a buffer in between with a non-internet computer. So you're confident that there's nothing going on with any kind of internet stuff that could interfere with what's on these sticks then?
Correct. That's all I have. Air gapped, I've learned the term air gapped computer.
Jason, you might have said, how long do you have on your grant money?
The end of this fiscal year, so.
Oh, yeah, we?
Yep.
Jason, how often do you get grants for those machines, I guess? Often they become available?
This is the first one since I've been here.
Why? Why now?
Well, I think it did at some point stem from the CARES Act. I'm not sure, well, I'll tell you, every county in North Carolina got their portion of a grant. So quite frankly, not sure what the origins of it are, other than I think it, you know, out of the CARES Act, I think it goes back to the General Assembly distributing this. And the State Board of Elections came up with a formula on, I think it's based on the Chamber of Commerce, Level 1, 2, 3, and I think Stokes County being Level 2, if I'm remembering correctly, that was the formula they used to how much they were going to award to each county.
Okay, so by tier system, okay.
Yeah.
And I think the last one we got was in 2006 when we bought them.
Right, that was before my time.
So there was a grant back in 2006?
Yeah.
A lot of grants purchased the voting machine.
Okay.
Question, if the county didn't decide to chip in the $21,000 difference, can you still spend the $51,000 to buy as much equipment as you could afford to get out of it?
Yeah, I've had some conversations with some folks about that. It is feasible to have, essentially at that point, you would have a voting site that, well, we'd split it up in some manner, maybe 13 sites, let's say, could have the express vote and then five would have the AutoMark. It would increase in elections what's called coding cost. Coding is when you burn the data on those flash drives or those cards. So having three different types of machines, but that's kind of a nominal, about $500 to $700 increase in the cost of an election was my estimate.
If I may, it's 16, we wouldn't have to pay them $16,220, we get the sales tax back.
Also, he's got the discounts on here too for the $92,000 trade-in, right?
Correct.
That would mean that's the savings, plus that $4,400 savings on the maintenance.
Correct, yeah.
So if you really can figure all that, it's more like $7,000. I mean, you know.
He needs to give me a figure. What's the number done for the next? We already budgeted this hall of grants, so I gotta move it from one account to another account.
If you did, yeah.
I didn't know I could take the sales tax out? Okay, that's pretty good.
Martin's all there?
Yeah, you're saying that $4,556, right?
Yeah.
So between that, the $4,000 and something on the maintenance savings and the $9,000 something on the trade-in, you're talking about a few thousand dollars in county funds after you take all the way, all that away. Take away the 44-
I see the maintenance till next year.
Yeah, the 40, take away 4,456 too for the sales tax.
One thing, maintenance saves till next year.
Yeah.
You should down to about $500.
Okay.
Before you take the sales tax away.
Any more, any more discussion on this? If I find a move into action, agenda, next time we're all like discussing it even further.
I think move it and we could still, if we have a concern that arises between now and then, bring it up.
Okay.
You could always have a blank number, couldn't you? And just, I mean, a blank budget amendment to do the number.
Thank you, Jason. Move on item C, the insurance renewals for fiscal year '21 and '22. Ms. Glenda, approve it. Been waiting patiently back there in the back of the room, hadn't you?
Good afternoon. We have received our renewal cost from the NCACC for our workers' comp, general liability and automotive insurance. I put the information in your packets showing last year's versus this year's, as normally it did increase some. But we do still get our 3% discount for the number of years both we've been in the program. And we also get a discount for being multi-pole, which means because we are in every group, not just one. So that does help us on that. I'm just requesting that the board approve for me to proceed on with renewal with NCACC. I do like working with them because they do offer us other things other than insurance. Perfect example, I called this morning for some security, kind of safety things, that some concerns with Stacy, and they're actually coming out for free for something that we thought might cost us to have someone come out. So I was real excited about that this morning. So not only that, they do reimburse us for things with the shares department, like the bulletproof vest, they give us kind of a rebate on those, as long as we show proof we purchased them. And for our bumper guards with the deer accidents, they really help. So we get some rebate back on that too. So if anybody has any questions, I will try my best to answer them.
Can I get one of those bumper guards? As I come over here now?
We'll see what we can do. I think we all would like to have one of those.
More questions, comments?
It looks good.
You need to just move to consent?
You can, you can go to next meeting because we're not, we got this early enough that the deadline's not till like the end of May, first of June for us to sign. So we're okay with waiting till next meeting if y'all want to.
Okay, let's get them put on action during the next meeting. All right, item D, the additional purchasing for policies and procedures. Ms. Glenda, approve it.
Yes. I'm coming to you because I would like to add a section in our current purchasing manual. Eventually, I hope you update the whole entire manual, but as I started, I realized it was very overwhelming on the things that I need to research. So this is one that I would like to add. In our general statute, it says that the board can adopt for me or county manager, whoever, you can choose whether it be the purchasing agent or your county manager, to be able to do private sales, anything less than $30,000 is what the general statute reads. I've done some research, kind of with our surrounding counties. A lot of them have put in theirs that they do $5,000 and less. And the reason I'm asking is, we have several, I've had outside people, perfect example for that one is Dale Hall in E911 has some computer monitors that another agency would like to purchase. But every time someone wants to do that, I have to come over to you, get it on the agenda, wait two weeks, and then publish it for 10 days. So if we did this, there's things that I don't feel sell very well on gov deals. Some items sell great on gov deals, we've done really successful. But a lot of things like furniture, computer monitors, things to that nature that really don't have a, they have value but not a great deal of value. I just feel that if we can private sell them, we're pretty much guaranteed money. You do have to do fair market value, which, you know, I would depend on those department heads to help me out with what kind of the value would be. Google is a great tool. So, but that's the reason I'm coming to ask for this. Just kind of, you know, it's totally up to you all what y'all would prefer. If you want me to come for everything, I'll be glad to. But, you know, I was thinking this may help the procedure-wise of being able to kind of get some of our smaller items going without having to go through the gov deals process. And two, even though the bidder pays for the, like, the buyer's premium, but that still costs that person. And a lot of times it's someone like Baptist Hospital or Davie County, for example, you know, I come for those, for those air tracks, you know, things we could, I could just proceed on with and not have to come before you all. But like I said, I'm just coming with the recommendation, I would like to add it if you all would allow me.
Okay. Any questions, comments on this? Commissioner Morrison?
Sure. So what would, if you were doing that, what would be the advertising process you would use to make sure that everybody got a fair chance?
Well, with this particular item, there wouldn't be any advertisement. It would, and I would only do it if someone specifically came and said, you know, for, like with those monitors, there's a person who works in E911 and they work somewhere else and they want to buy them to upgrade theirs and not have to buy new. But like I said, that would be the only thing, you wouldn't advertise. It would just be kind of word of mouth. And I have a lot of the public that actually call and say, you know, I seen this, are y'all gonna use it? Can I buy it? And, you know, I have to say, well, you have to go on gov deals. A lot of them will not pursue gov deals in our area. Some of them do, but most of the sales that I do are off, three and four hours away. So.
What exactly does the statute say about all this? So to keep, I still can't figure how somebody's not going to say you sold it to your buddy or something?
Right. That's just, it's just something that I would not do.
I know you would do that.
Yeah, but it does.
I'm talking about the process, the process. So, you know, mainly from the aspect of protecting you-
Right.
-from any kind of-
Right.
-charges or whatever of doing something, especially up to $30,000, that could be, you know, that's significant money, so.
Yeah, and that's the reason I went and kind of researched some other ones and it basically said $5,000 or less. And actually, some of them had a stipulation in there that said that anyone who, like this one says, anyone who has any control over the surplus of property, like, no one could buy it. Like my family, anything to that nature, I can private sell to anyone related to me because I deal with it. So there is some stipulations we can work. I kind of, before- Um, so there is some stipulations, we can work, I kind of, before I come with, this is exactly what I want to do, I wanted to see if you all were even interested in adding it. If not, we'll leave it just like it is, and I'll come before you. I don't have a problem with it, I just was thinking time.
So you researched some of the surrounding counties and other counties to see what they did?
Yeah, and some of them, like, some of them had it listed just exactly the way the general statute reads, which is what I put into your agenda packet, and then some of them had actually branched out on their own and put a property valued less than $5,000 instead of the $30,000.
If our statute is just required to be 30,000.
Yeah. And that you have to secure it at fair market value, keep records, you know, you have to have a list of exactly what you did transaction-wise.
And auditors would look at that, I guess, every year?
I would think so. I, I didn't get that far with Julia, but I, I would think so, I would hope so.
Commissioner Minhao?
Could you still, could you still do it, like, just for transparency's sake, if you adopted that policy, could you put in there to that you were gonna post it publicly for 10 days before you sold it?
Oh, yeah.
Even on a private sale, like, like how we do to upset bids for, um, property? If somebody bids on one, it has to come here first, but it would be the same thing. If you did that, then you'd post it 10 days on the website.
Yeah.
Just have an area for private sale surplus, people could check it periodically if they wanted to.
I think that would be a, a great idea. I mean, I think you can add anything you prefer.
And you still say the two-week period, two, or a month period here on two weeks one week, two weeks another, and then 10 days, it would just be 10 days.
Right, right.
That's just the idea.
Commissioner Minhao, do you have a question?
I did, I did. Uh, Glenda, I sort of concur with some, um, concerns that Commissioner Morris had as far as the advertising. Uh, that worries me because we're trying to look after you.
Right.
And I'm looking at my, our attorney right now, and I don't know if you can pull up General Statute 168-266C, but, you know, there's a sentence down here from time to time, I've requested from the public, local businesses and other government agencies to purchase items for placing on gov deals. You know, I, I just, where I dealt with gov deals in the school system, I, I just really feel like we may be opening ourselves up to some liability issues, cause no matter how much she takes care of this in a very honest way, let's say something's put out there that sells to Johnny Brown, and then two days later Jimmy Smith calls and says, "I wanted that item." And whether you place a number of days or whatever, to me, advertising and not giving each person an equal chance, I, I just, I see some things that could really go wrong with this.
Yeah.
And don't get me wrong, I know that you're doing this to try to expedite the situation, and that's fine, but, boy, I could just, wow. I, I know Ricky down at, when he handled gov deals for me at the school system, um, we usually came out pretty good. I mean, every item you put on gov deals, it's not gonna go great, but most of the items went pretty well, and I just don't want you or the board to get into an issue here, um, that might cause a problem. Do you see anything, do you see anything under the general, this that could cause us an issue?
No, and I see the provision for requiring that publication of notice. It's up to you all, you can do it either way.
And this may be, when you were talking, I just thought, this may be an idea, because the things that I usually have the issue is, is with the smaller stuff. Um, so, you know, we could do, I could just come if I have somebody or post it for 10 days, see if anybody does, and, and, you know, we can go that route, or we can continue just like we're doing. Um, that's totally up to y'all.
I know you're doing this to try to help, help us out.
Right.
I'm just.
And I see your concerns.
I'm trying to make sure, my Board of Education members made sure I handled all that. Isn't that right, Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, it took us out of the equation at all, you know, cause even I went on gov deals and had to buy some, or, no, it was not from us, it was from another county, actually, cause I couldn't buy from us, but a projector thing, so I, and it was probably only worth $50, but, you know, I had to do that one time from another system. But, um, you know, I can see, I could, maybe if we lowered the threshold to, you know, lower than 5,000, and we advertised it on our website, I might could see that, if, if that's what other counties are doing, I, maybe you could research a little more and bring us back some more examples of what other counties are doing, like their policy, and let us look at it. I'm not totally against it, but there are a lot of pitfalls that we'd have to be really careful about, I think.
Commissioner Porter, can I see this?
And one thing too, and, and, Commissioner Morrison, you know, right here is, uh, that's a good point, in that .gov, we found out, you know, we're trying to get rid of fire trucks, you know, how that works too, but a good word of advice to you is to, you know, put it on the internet and take sealed bids on this stuff and put a time on there, well, those sealed bids is gonna be open. And a great suggestion is, don't do this by yourself, have other people with you.
Yeah. Yeah, I always have somebody to come with me when we do the sealed bid opening. Tracy did one this week with me.
That way you can't nobody say, you know, you picked this particular person.
Right.
Any more questions, comments on it?
Well, a comment, I, I'm all for trying to streamline, but look at a lower threshold, whatever.
Okay.
Whatever matches the kind of stuff you're selling, maybe, and, right, if you could lower it some, and then, and then just try to design a process where if your family did buy it, nobody would question it, they won't pass it.
I, we don't, I don't. Believe me, I look at it enough. They may beg to differ, but I 100% agree.
Okay, that's all.
I've forbidden them from gov deals.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do some more research and come back.
All right. Before we move on to item E, we're over halfway, so I'm just gonna take a quick five-minute break, uh, we'll resume about 3:22. We'll resume about 3:22.